Welcome to the Thursday, April 28, 2016 regular meeting of the Hockington School Committee. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we're going to start with public comment?
It's up to you.
Well, we're not going to do recognitions, right?
I have one.
Okay, so we're going to start with recognitions, move on to public comment, then we'll have reports to the school committee, followed by new business, the middle school program of studies, the high school program of studies, and a capital project article warrant. We have no old business, we'll have our second opportunity for public comment, and then items by consensus. Dr. McLeod, would you like to start with recognitions?
So, I was just very excited to learn that, remember the robotics team that came and they were so delightful? Well, they won. They placed first in Massachusetts.
Wow.
Yes, and 68 out of 200 in their division worldwide.
Wow.
At the VEX World Robotics Competition in Kentucky.
How old were they again?
They were middle schoolers, 7th and 8th graders, I want to say.
Like their first year, right?
Right. Remember how delightful they were when they came and they were just so, yeah. So, they went and they were very excited to have the opportunity to go, and then they won it.
Oh, that's amazing.
Congratulations, that was, yeah. I don't know if anybody else has any recognitions. Okay.
Okay, so we'll move on to public comment. So, you can come on up and sit right here, and we'll have, you have two minutes, you can state your name and your address.
I'm Anne Botan, Sixth Angels Way. And I'm Hockington, mother of two, and to our school committee and superintendent McLeod, I'd like to thank you for opening the recess conversation. I do look forward to learning our current recess policies and our school's particular barriers to adequate recess time. I would like to ask the school committee and/or the superintendent to form a subcommittee to assess the situation and gather feedback from the school and parent community. A committee such as this could determine recess-related goals and pathways to overcome identified barriers. I would like to offer my help as a parent and as an education and psychology researcher. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have any, does anyone else want to speak? Public comment?
Maybe, or...
Okay. So, oh. That's okay.
I'm Gail Kramer, parent of six. I'm sort of past the recess conversation, but I wanted to throw in that I am a huge proponent of looking at this with the idea of maximizing the use of play, playtime, open space, particularly if we have more time in the day for kindergarteners, for example, things like that. Not only is it the way children learn, but it's also the way we stay healthy, the way we handle, learn to handle our stress, and a lot of our social learning. So, I'm very, very interested in this and would like to support it if that was helpful.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So, the first report we have is our student council report, and our student is not here, so we can have our liaison.
We're missing him.
Always.
He's a busy person.
I know, I ran into him at one of the enrichments, and I was like, "We want, we want to see you."
Is that Jack?
Jack.
Oh, everything is awesome.
He was the star of Kenyan Runner Day inadvertently.
Yes, he was. That's right.
So, next we have a liaison report, and I know we've specifically called out the town charter review, but I'm not sure if anyone else has liaison reports as well.
I have the SBC, but I need to go first.
Okay.
I'm going to start the charter.
However you want to do it, because mine might be longer, I don't know.
Go this way.
All right, we'll go this way. So, you all have read the charter many times, I'm sure, and as part of the process, we're at the point where the review committee has sent a memo to all town department heads and committees, basically requesting input into what does and doesn't work well under the charter for your particular committee. Are there any edits or changes that we would have to recommend? And so, so we've already actually talked about it once or twice during our meetings, and I am on the committee, so everybody doesn't have a representative on the committee, but the school committee does. So, I do think that a lot of our feedback has been forwarded, but I just, you know, because it's going out to all the other committees, I wanted to make sure they had a final chance to look it over. Then, from here, all of that feedback will be incorporated, and there'll be a lot of public input and public forums. In addition, just by way of update, we're looking at charters from a lot of other surrounding towns, so comparable towns demographically and also abutting towns, just to compare and contrast and see what other towns are doing as they're going through a similar process. So, that said, if there are comments that we have not already put forward to the charter review committee that you want me to, to bring back to the next meeting, I will write them down.
And Jean, particularly around sections on annual town meeting on page 10, and then the budget process on page, well, school committee terms, terms of office on page 15, and then the section on page 24.
Right. So, right, so there's, right, so there's a section in the school, in the charter that describes the school committee and our roles and responsibilities, and obviously, most of that is also defined through the mass general laws, so, you know, our statutory responsibilities regarding the budget and that kind of thing isn't really open for discussion. However, the timing of the budget process is also identified in the charter. That's been a topic of conversation at our meetings, at our school committee meetings, at the charter review meetings. The other topic of conversation, or a suggestion that has been put forward to the committee is limiting chairs of committees for serving more than two years in a row. So, if that's something that you have thought or feedback on, that's just a suggestion that's been put forward. I'm trying to remember what other things might be of most relevance to us, but I think those are the highlights.
So, one thing that comes to mind immediately, having just come from a meeting with the moderator just now, where we were hearing final decisions about appropriations and CIC, is that it feels like the recommendation that department heads have submitted detailed budget requests by January 1st, and here we are almost May, and still talking about something that had to be submitted months ago. Maybe the whole, maybe everybody's timeline needs to be moved forward, because we are asked to be starting these conversations in October, when people have just arrived and are just beginning this year's budget cycle. We're just starting with that, we're asking, being asked to think ahead to next year's, and then it feels that we keep talking about it for the next five months. And, and it is, it's a very different timeline than many surrounding towns I know from other superintendents who haven't even begun their process when we're finished hours. But, we're not really finished it, because then we keep talking about it. So, I don't know, I've always wondered about that, and I didn't know if there, if that had been considered by the charter review committee as a whole.
I will definitely, we have had conversation around the timeline of the budget, and we're not at the point where we're making any recommendations at all, really, we're just kind of discussing it, comparing with other towns and talking. There was a list of suggestions that were put forward to us right from the beginning that have sort of been collected over the years, so that we have discussed but not taken a position on. So, so that has definitely been discussed, and in specific where the submission of the school committee budget falls within that. So, there was a recommendation, which I have said previously at earlier meetings, there was a recommendation to move our submission deadline forward, and I think I heard loud and clear from all of us that that's not something that we're comfortable doing that would work well for us.
Unless the whole calendar was moved forward.
Exactly, although, but we did try last year to start our process earlier and found that because of how early the administrative team had to start, it just really was challenging.
Yeah, I feel like part of the problem with starting our process earlier is that we don't have any guidelines. And so, the other piece on page 24 that I called out was, if we are going to keep this timeline, then under Section 62C, where it says prior to the first day of November in each year, we're well into our process by then. So, we really need to have some kind of direction by October about the budget guidelines.
And I think, and typically, we don't even, I mean, that's a, that's a rollover provision, right?
Right.
Typically, with the guidance we get is directional at best.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, we've talked before about the month of January, looking for some more detailed guidance around revenue and tax-based provisions, to be able to know kind of how we can craft our budget within that, so.
Yes.
Yeah, I, I think my, I'll sort of somewhat repeat my, my general feeling on that, which is that it's not that I'm locked in on a budget timeframe, it's just, I don't necessarily see the value in, to the entire process in adjusting our timeframe, so. Given our roles and responsibilities, we're submitting our budget differently than other town departments are submitting their budget, so. Again, absent sort of a compelling reason, I don't see why we would move it up.
Mm-huh.
But I'm only one person.
So, can I ask a logistical question with respect to the email that came to the chairs? I guess no one else got it. Is this something that we're, that I draft answers to and we go through at another meeting? Or is this something that you're, that that's what you're seeking feedback on now?
Yeah.
I don't know the difference, because we have a liaison role, which I think is fantastic.
Right.
I don't know why, if I should be the one filling this out.
Only if you want to. I think the same email went to all the, all the chairs and department heads, and again, they don't, and I think in there there was an invitation to come to a meeting, so unless that's something that you all feel that you want to do, I am there to represent us, so I don't think that it's probably necessary for the Board of Selectmen or the school committee or the appropriations committee, for example, because all of us have representatives there. But, having said that, I don't, you know, there's no reason not to if you think that that would be of benefit, but I think we're all kind of on the same page about where we are with this.
Okay. That's how I felt about it, I wasn't going to respond or to these, to the questions, because I didn't, I, you actually just brought up the only ones that I think might be remotely relevant or something we want to think about, which is sort of what works for us with respect to timing and the board committee chair rotation.
The one other question that's been raised that would be directly relevant to the school committee is, before the charter, the selectmen had some ability to not put articles on the warrant, requested articles. The way that the charter is written, they do, you know, any committee or department can put articles on the warrant, and citizens can if they have a certain number of signatures. And so, there are times, like when we had the special town meeting for the school, where they really, really strongly encouraged no other departments to put warrant articles, but they can't prevent them, and they did, and that, so that was incorporated into the special town meeting. So, that is another question and would be relevant to the school committee, just what, if you think that there should be any flexibility there or any ability by the Board of Selectmen to take some things off, or, I mean, they can vote, they do vote to recommend or not recommend them, but they can't remove them. And so, that was the other topic of conversation, because we often put articles on. So, that's the only other thing I throw out there.
So, ultimately, all the changes that are proposed by the charter committee, do those all get voted on by the town?
Yeah, so, good question. I should have started with that. So, the, the way that the whole process works is, the charter review committee will take all this input, have public forums, draft whatever revisions come out of that, and then there will be a special town meeting, most likely in the winter, where the town has to approve the revised charter. Then, it has to go to the Attorney General for approval, then it has to go to the ballot. So, originally, we were hoping to have the charter revised for town meeting this week, but even if you did that, there's no possible way it can go to the ballot at the same, in the same month, because it has to, in the meantime, go to the Attorney General. And so, given that, we drew, and because the committee was called together late, we felt like we needed more time, and that a year in between voting at town meeting and then voting at the election was really difficult for people to remember, and it just kind of didn't make sense. So, the timeline is that most likely they'll do a special town meeting, you know, somewhere in the fall, winter, then send it back to the Attorney General, and then the vote will be in May of 2017. So, any changes that are made would not be affected, effective until that, that point. So, you, you know, you hear about another committee talking about changing the town clerk from elected to appointed, that wouldn't take effect, whether they bring that article forward on Monday or not, wouldn't take effect until a year from now.
The only other question I have is, we talk about moving the timeline forward. I'm directionally challenged as to which direction we're talking. Are we going into December? Are we going forward into February?
So, I was saying, go forward into February, March, so that it's closer to the, this whole, all of these reviews that take place, and we'd be closer to getting a better idea, a better direction, I think, maybe a better idea of what the percent increase may or may not be. It, it feels like we do such a thorough job of examining every single line in our budget, and it almost makes it a focus of our work for the entire year, and then we start all over again. Instead of being able to start into the year, let the, you know, let us get going with, with our academic year, and then start thinking about the following year. It's very disruptive when you start asking department heads and principals to be thinking about, well, what do you want for next year, and what are the priorities? And programmatically, when we can't even get our year started and off the ground, and our focus on our current strategic initiatives, it, it can be, it can really be distracting way to start the year. So, it's just a thought that, and I wondered why we do it so early, that if we could start a little bit later, like even beginning, you know, an initial kind of look at it in December instead of in October, would, I think, be really helpful.
So, is there any, and this might just be playing devil's advocate or just trying to take the contrary position, but is there any benefit to us sort of going first and having done that thorough process and being done with it and having a number, and then when it comes to the Board of Selectmen and they have to look at other people's budgets, maybe for the first time, or that didn't have this long, lengthy thorough process, we're sort of, I'm going to say favored, but do you know?
I do know what you're saying. That is the structure, though, because we submit our final number. So, the other town departments, I think, and I don't have it in front of me, submit their requested number, like around January 1st, and we're submitting our final number February 1st, and they're still working on the other department numbers, and so the Board of Selectmen doesn't vote their number till the middle of March and send it to appropriations, although this year then they asked them to do something to it and send it back, so it got extended further. So, so I sort of feel like that is the structure.
But why are the other departments able to give their final numbers later than us?
Well, my guess is because ours is bigger, and, you know, it takes a little bit more juggling.
But then it feels like the pieces around the capital articles happen outside of that process, and so today, we found out that one of our, that there was no action on it, on a number that was kind of, interestingly enough, a $300,000 marker that had been thrown around that we needed to find in our budget. And, and so, it just seems like, instead of it being a connected discussion that is open, and, and we're looking at the, at the town as a whole and the needs of the town, it feels a little disjointed, and that process kind of takes on a life of its own, and I get and understand that different committees need to weigh in on what they're being asked to weigh in on, but when it's done kind of separate from the total, so this happened to be the bus parking lot discussion today, that kind of...
The thing is too, is that, what I don't understand is, we have ours in by January. Nothing's done with it until at least March.
Right.
So, I think that, so, so I think that there, there's reasoning behind us getting ours, ours in prior, in February, because, not to say that our, you know, that ours can't be adjusted post-February, but I think this is a, Jean, I might be echoing the point you're making, so essentially, we sort of establish our final budget, and then the town knows what is coming from our side of the budget, so that the town budget can be crafted around that, is the way it's structured right now.
But the percent is always, percent is always pretty close, right?
Yeah, I mean, admittedly, it is, and so, I, and I think, but the other thing I think we need to be careful of here when we talk about this is, and, and I don't disagree that the integration of the capital with the operating budget would be beneficial, but in fairness, we don't really do that right now. It's not like we looked at our percentage and, and tagged in the capital ask that we had and said, overall, this is actually the hit we're asking for, which admittedly is because we don't even know if the town's going to debt exclude it, if it's going to be part of the operating budget. So, you could operate these as effectively as two separate budget processes, but under a previous town finance director, they started getting all of the debt under the levy as opposed to debt exclusions, and so that made it have to be integrated more. So, I, part of it is sort of what's going to be the philosophy of the town.
Right.
In terms of capital, that is going to, that probably drives whether, but, and see, I'm cutting back and forth on this, I'm having a debate with myself.
How's that going?
Not that well. The, but, you know, at, at the end of the day, we are, regardless of whether we're debt excluding the capital items or putting them into the, the, under the levy, we're asking the town for a certain percentage.
That's it.
It's either two and a half, or it's two and a half plus the debt excluded item, so we probably, as a whole town, would benefit from thinking about a more coordinated approach, where we could actually say, I think, I think that's been asked at pre, previous town meetings to say, can you show us what the actual overall increase is going to be this year?
I'm not sure, yes, and I, and I think we're all agreeing.
I haven't answered any of those questions at all.
I don't think, I'm, I'm struggling with what the advantage of is for us.
Yeah.
Of being so far out in front of it, because, as I said, the whole, and I, and I understand that, that then it's clear what the, what the school department is going to need to function, but then it kind of gets tabled for several months. So, if it's going to be tabled for several months, and if we could have more time to put it forward and work with our admin on what it's going to look like a year out, we would definitely benefit from that.
I would also say that there's consideration that, that we've operated under that February 1st deadline, obviously, the entire time the charter's been in existence, but our budget timeline has been extremely variable over the years in term, and we used to, the school committee used to start with our meeting, first meeting in January, talking about the budget, that would be, we'd have...
Wow.
Well, we'd have the superintendent's proposed budget in December.
You'd have the presentation in December.
And then we'd meet every week in January, and we adjusted it to earlier. So, presumably, we could operationally control our budget timing and discussions and still maintain that February 1st deadline.
Mm-huh. I mean, I see your point, Dr. McLeod, because my thoughts too are the fact that there are aspects of our budget that are very volatile based on the needs of the students during the year, especially our special education budget. And as you get further into the year, you have more capability of seeing what those needs are going to be, especially with your incoming kindergarten class and things of that nature. And additionally, the winter months seem to be when things break, and, you know, we, we tend to be able to plan a little bit more on our facility spend, and those are like the more variable spends that we don't have a lot of control over. So, I see that point in, in being able to have more time to assess those needs for the following year, as opposed to making the decision right when you've come back in the building and things have been taken care of over the summer. So, I don't disagree with you, I just don't think I fully understand or appreciate the other department aspects that have to go around our budget, as you were describing, to understand whether or not there's really a barrier to moving us out, but I would certainly be a proponent of moving it out versus moving it in.
Hmm.
All right, so, we haven't varied from that, so that's good, we're consistent, and...
Don't get earlier.
So, I think, and in addition, I think I will remind them that we're also looking for more clarity or a rethink of the CIC timeline, because it feels like we submit really, don't we do it in like October?
Well, it says right on here, January something, right?
They have to deliver, they have to deliver to, by January 15th to the, to the town.
Yeah, but we get it to them.
Has there been any discussion, I'm curious, has there been any discussion, because I feel like one of the places where we get constantly hung up at this stage of the game is almost a procedural challenge, which is that any of the capital articles need to be reviewed by CIC, then need to be reviewed by appropriation, then need to move on to the warrant, or, I mean, they're on the warrant, but they, but both of those independent approvals, and I often question sort of what, is there clarity on the distinct purpose of each? And, and it just, it just seems to me that we end up in this situation where, I mean, I, this is speaking to the days when I was on appropriation, albeit briefly, we had warrant articles that we just simply were acting upon the day of town meeting, because CIC hadn't, hadn't taken action yet.
Or had a...
And appropriation can't actually do anything with it until CIC takes it.
Right.
So, it feels like there are some procedural challenges there without, I think, a real clear and distinct purpose of each role. And when I read through the charter, it didn't seem like it, I mean, the language is the same, so it doesn't seem like it clarifies it.
So, let me throw this out there as well, because since the charter's been written, we, the town came up with camp.
Yes.
Which was a good idea, I'm not sure it's really been updated. Is that a model that you think is of value, and, and the charter would benefit by incorporation of that practice?
So, for, I, so I personally think yes, and I think that the, the, the way the capital improvement, the way the capital improvement committee's role is expressed in the charter actually seems to point directly to camp, which is that their, their charge is to deliver a capital plan, which is in many ways different than approving individual warrant articles.
Right.
And so, I wonder if, yeah, if we focus something more on a capital asset management plan, that could be honestly part of an annual, should be part of an annual budgeting process and potentially a town meeting process, but...
Right.
But rather than having that somewhat, what sometimes appears like a redundant focus on the individual warrant article.
All right, well, those are all good suggestions, I think, my, you know, as we continue to follow the process, and I'll pay particular attention as, as we review other towns' timelines to how some of our concerns might be better addressed in some other formats, and see if there's something that we can recommend, and certainly we'll bring it back for any discussion, but unless there's more.
I just, the only question I have, and it's related to what John's talking about, it may not be directly on point though, is the, the charter was developed before we had a town manager.
The charter created the town manager position.
Oh, it did.
Yes.
Okay, so were all of the various groups that review, do their reviews during the budget process, like appropriations, the town manager, the Board of Selectmen, capital improvements committee, do they, like, I just wonder if there are any redundancies there, because it just seems like, it seems like a very large group of people reviewing with the same focus, but, you know, I, so I guess that's the only thing I wonder, is if the, if the team's looking at whether or not there were redundancies in that now that we do have a town manager. Now, if it was developed because we had a town manager, then maybe they decided that all those teams were needed for, you know, for there to be distinct groups looking at it from different aspects. I don't know.
Well, I mean, I think you raise a good point, and just solely my perspective and opinion, I think that that's why this first review is so important, because, you know, they wrote the charter in anticipation of including a town manager, and they diffused some of the authority of the Board of Selectmen and invested it in the town manager position, and so, to me, this is the first time where you're, they're really having that conversation, which is, is this working out the way we envisioned it, and did we have a good vision, or what is, you know, basically, what is the tweaking that we need to do, because do we have too many hands in some pots and not enough in others, or whatever? So, I think you just really hit the crux of the conversation for this first review, for sure, so.
I mean, I don't know if you're looking for opinions on the limiting the number of years for the chair, I don't really, I hadn't really ever given it a lot of thought based on the fact that I think there are no rules that are longer than three years until you're elected again, so...
Well, the planning board is five.
Oh, it's five, okay.
Five years. Yeah, I mean, I don't, in my memory of the school committee, nobody's ever done it for more than two years in a row, but if you have an opinion, I will register it, if not.
No, I just wondered where...
I think maybe there's some other committees that are pointing.
Committees that feel like the terms are too long. I see, okay. I don't think it's directly impacting our committee, so...
They're not trying to kick us out. Okay. Thank you.
John, you're on a holdback on ESBC, and we will move to, move up item 5B, so we can call it Mr. Bishop, and at the same time, while he's up here, we'll, we'll talk about the turf field.
Fine, if Evan wants to get out of here.
Mr. Bishop, it sounds like we're going to start with...
Is the rest of the committee, I only asked because John was... Is the rest of the committee, I only asked because John was next, but I'm, we're all okay with moving.
I'm good with that, yep.
Sounds like the chair would like you to start with item 5B, so we'll start with the program of studies, if that's okay, and then I'll come and join you for the turf field discussion.
It's okay, it's perfect.
And, and, you know, I will just preempt, before you get started, just what a wonderful public forum you and Alan and your teaching staff had the other night on the STEM initiatives and all the wonderful things that are going on in the community. I feel that you were so open and provided so much information for families that there seems to be very little questions remaining. But I'll add to that, because I know, Jean, you were there, and I know that you have, were very impressed with, with the discussion, that a follow-up to that was one, when one young man, eighth grader, stood up and said, very appropriately, you know, I'm one of those students that was affected by the, by the current math pathways. And as a response to that, Mr. Bishop and Mr. Keller have been looking at alternatives for our current eighth graders, and we've come up with a plan to address students who, over the summer, who would like to participate in addition, in basically the equivalent of preparing them, you know, the equivalent of Algebra I.
Correct, yes.
So the district is going to offer for students who are identified as appropriate for that opportunity, and then they would pass an examination to be able to then, when they start ninth grade, go right into geometry. So we've addressed the gap that had been a concern. So I just want, before you begin this portion, to thank you and Mr. Keller for all of your work and all of your teachers for taking such a close look at, at that issue.
Thank you.
Okay, so for our consideration is the request and recommendation of the superintendent to approve the high school program of studies as outlined in the agenda materials. We have a motion in front of us, and I don't know if you want to speak to the motion before anyone makes it?
Yeah, it can be brief, because you could probably see, we haven't made many changes to the program of studies for next year. I've been meeting with our, our subject matter leaders over the last few months, and we often talk about the classes that we have, and we feel comfortable and confident about the offerings that we have at the high school. There was one department that we have examined this year, it's the technology and engineering department, which is brand new. So we've done an assessment, and some of the new courses that we have, hoping to offer, are mostly in that department. We have four that we're proposing to be in the program of studies for next year. There are no budgetary implications on any of them. The way it works is we have a number of courses in our program of studies, and we run what is the student's interests, and if the students aren't interested in it, we don't run it. And sometimes it goes back and forth from year to year. So if we were to run one of these courses, the reality is that another course that we offer this year might not run, okay? So I'll just quickly go through the four classes, and if you have any questions on them, I'll certainly be able to answer them. The first is a sustainable engineering course, which is going to have our students really focus on real-world global problems. The focus of the class is on the UN global goals, around water, energy, and other global issues, waste management, food. This has come about, this class, from some of our students taking some trips over the last few years, and this has really been a desire of some of our kids to get more involved with, with kind of sustainable things like this, and so that's why we've created the course. And we've already had a number of students say they'd be interested, upwards of 40 to 45 kids, so we'll probably at least run a section, one section for a semester and one second semester, which is, which is exciting. The second is a 3D design and fabrication class, or a fab lab, as you might want to call it, and that's an interdisciplinary course, it's art and it's engineering. I think that this is a perfect class for a student that is interested in architecture, 3D design, sculpture. We talk a lot about STEM, we had a STEM night the other night, but there is a movement of STEAM, and the A is art, and this class would really be an insert for us to talk a little bit about the engineering and learning design process when it comes to art as well as science, technology, and engineering. So, again, we've heard, we've had some students really interested in this course, so we're excited that we'll be able to run at least one section of that, hopefully, next year as well. Team robotics, this really isn't a new class. We offer an intro to robotics, but a team robotics class is going to be a full-year course. The intro is a semester-based course. So the team robotics really is for the kids who want to take it kind of to the next level. There is an expectation that they will have at least two out-of-school interscholastic competitions when it comes to the robotics. They will be learning skills such as leadership, project management, presentation, writing skills. Doug Scott did a team robotics club and class back in Natick, and so he's bringing this over to Hopkinson as well, so we're excited about it. We've talked to a number of the kids who are in intro to robotics that would be very interested in trying to take this team. So you can take them both. So the intro is more of a semester-based in-class competition, this is more of, let's take it outside and compete against other towns. So we're excited about that as well. And then the last one is art history. So we have AP art history offered at the high school, we usually run upwards of three to four sections, but there are some students that aren't quite ready for the AP level but are interested in art history as a subject. So we are going to put this in the program of studies at different levels, college prep and honors, if students want to learn about art history but do not want to take on necessarily an AP course. And so those really are the four new courses that we have in the program of studies. I think we do have a wide array of courses for students at all levels, and like I said, I feel we're pretty comfortable and confident in what we have right now, we just feel these are some small tweaks to make the program of studies even better, so.
Great, so, I don't know if you have any comments or questions, we have a motion for you.
I just think I went to high school in the wrong century.
I know.
I agree. All right, thank you, Mr. Bishop. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the high school program of study?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Ms. Birchman, seconded by Ms. Nickerson, all those in favor?
Yes.
unanimous, and so carries. So as part of the superintendent's report, we were going to talk about the turf field update, so.
So I'll just kick it off, so a committee was formed, one of the, Mr. Bishop's school improvement plan goals was to look at the, what would be involved in, in, in having a turf field. This is something that we've been, certainly there's been a lot of community interest in, we've heard about repeatedly about how we seem to be the only town around without one. So Mr. Bishop did form a committee, and using athletic revolving accounts, did, gathered, worked with Gale Associates to gather some preliminary information on what, what could potentially be a turf field at the high school. The, I'm going to let Mr. Bishop talk about the packet that he just handed to you, but we realize in many discussions that we've been having, that this, this proposal, this article that we were intending to talk about on Monday at town meeting, will come as a surprise to many, because when there's been discussion amongst people in the town broadly, any discussion about a turf field has assumed that that turf field would be located on the current, what we call the football field, and I'm, I'm reminded that that's not what I'm supposed to call it, because it's more than just a football field. But, Mr. Bishop, why don't you talk a little bit about the discussions that had taken place to date?
Yep.
And then the school committee will discuss what they, what they want to do, move forward.
So there was a committee put together, Kathy Herble, a Hopkinson resident herself, who works for Gale Associates, and she's the one who put together this packet from the revolving account, Mr. Kargill, Al Rogers, members of the Parks and Rec, Mr. Gonzalez, who's here tonight, who's a math teacher but also administrative intern, he's been part of the committee as well, Dr. McLeod's made a few meetings, and we've met probably about four to five times this year to discuss the possibility of trying to get some type of turf surface. And in this packet is, is what came about from the feasibility of the study that we had the Gale Associates do, from the athletic revolving account. And so typically, when we talk to people about this, they just assume it's going to be on the main field, that field three, football field, so to speak. And I think when I first went into this, I thought that would probably be the place we would want it as well. But when we had Gale Associates kind of do some specs and give us some, some, some figures here, and as you can see that on the second page of your packet, the reality is the space that's within the track on Field Three is too small to have, be a multipurpose sport field. If we wanted to have it be just a football field and maybe play some field hockey, we could do that. I guess we looked at it as wanting to have more access to more sports and more community use. And so you can see with the specs, the track is around the outside, and soccer and lacrosse fields are going into the track. So in order to have a regulation soccer lacrosse field, we'd have to widen the track, and I think you guys know what it looks like out there, there's really no place to widen the track, and the track is relatively new. So that got us thinking, okay, what else can we do to try to accommodate as many sports as, as we can? And so as you go to the next page, this is the field that is directly below Field Three, our fields four and five, and this is a much larger complex, as you can see, and what's, what's attractive to the committee about it, because I think the committee, when, again, we're open to all options, but I feel like the committee did like this one, because it has the option of having every sport, soccer, lacrosse, field hockey, football, if you wanted to, and you could see a baseball and a softball field is there as well. Around the outsides in this proposal, there, it's tough to tell in this packet, but there are lights potentially, bleachers. So, you know, we felt it was more flexible, more sports can compete on it, it actually gives, I know there's a number of schools, like Dr. McLeod mentioned, in our league that have turf and we don't, we do have some great grass surface, I think we do a great job of keeping them, but this would actually give us the opportunity as a high school, I know it's for community use as well, but as a high school to have fields that are turf for all sports as well as grass, which would be unique in that, in that regard, which is exciting. So, and then as you, as you could see, the next graph is, is a smaller version of, of this, where we wouldn't actually do the whole field, but we would just do some of it, the actual black outline is where the turf would be, so it wouldn't be that softball field to the right, but it would be that other area there. And then I guess I did want to show the last graph, which is the second to last page, and I don't mean to go through it too quickly, I want to show you have questions, but we talk a lot about community use, and I think this is important, that it's a community project, and, you know, there's going to be outside organizations that are probably going to want to compete on this, whether it's Memorial Day Soccer Tournament or Columbus State Lacrosse Tournament. As you could see here, there's a possibility upwards of four to five fields that we could create for, for youth sports. And so I just, you know, taking this all into consideration, yes, I think Field Three is certainly the football field, we'll call it, is certainly what people will think of first, but when, hopefully, we take some time next year to do some educating around this process, that this is, this is a very viable option as well, to get all of our kids on here, and as many community members on there as well. So that's some of the conversations that we have had this year, like I said, we've met four or five times. I know we're going to kind of push this back a little bit to next year, and I think next year is going to be a process of us, you know, getting this out to the community and trying to get buy-in for what we're trying to do, so.
And I think to include, you know, I mean, clearly, it wasn't, that Field Three wasn't considered at all, but a little bit more in-depth information, because there is misunderstanding around, you know, the, the specifications on those fields. So it felt like, having said all of this, it felt like we had been prepared to come forward with an article for $100,000, design phase of, we wanted to be able to go to town meeting, at least having done feasibility, and not just talk about it as a concept. Yes, we'd like a turf field, and we'd like $100,000. The thought was, let's do feasibility, using athletic revolving fee account to fund it, and here's some information, now we can go to the, to the town and ask for some funding to, to fund the design phase. Having said that, it feels as if there might be enough misunderstanding about Field Three that could cause the article to fail outright. Having said that, we just, we went to the moderators' meeting and, not expecting this, Alan and I, just before this meeting, to learn that it, it already had been, both appropriations and capital, had recommended no action on that article. So we kind of said, oh, well, we were going to be talking with school committee tonight about this very topic, and so now it's before you to determine what next steps are as far as what we want to do on Monday night.
So just to follow that up with respect to, what did you call that meeting, the preparation for all-town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
I called it the moderators' meeting.
The moderators' meeting. With Ray and the chair of the board of selectmen. So the board of selectmen chair, Mr. Polico, was very surprised, and
As were we.
I would, I would go almost upset that this was, we were taking no action on this, and, or that it was recommended to take no action. And his point was that he still wants this project to be moving forward. And he believes if we need, that's fine, if we're going to take another year to investigate and review where it should go, and can it definitely not go on Field Three, whatever it is we think we need to do to get our ducks in a row, to do feasibility a year later. He really wants us to ask for whatever money we need to do that process. And so the point was made, that will still, we can amend the motion, it will fall within the motion that we have here, we can, we can make an amendment, ask for less than $100,000 so that we can continue this process of, I don't know, investigation.
Which I think would be worthwhile, because it would allow us also to use the forum of town meeting to potentially introduce this concept to a lot of the town that may not be fully aware of what we're talking about doing. You know, I mean, even looking at some of these, some of these potential diagrams, I think would be helpful in a discussion about what we want to investigate at town meeting, the fact that we have explored Field Three, and it would give us that opportunity to move the process forward and engage with the community and find out what the appetite is and what the, and really be able to educate people.
The thing I have a concern about is, this is the first time we're seeing it. We haven't even figured out what our appetite is. I mean, I have questions just looking at this as well, and so it's fine to propose, to provide some of the schematics and provide that information, but I don't feel like we as a committee could get up and have, not necessarily a recommendation, but any kind of cohesive presentation ourselves, because we haven't really had time to digest this either. I don't disagree with, with the, the thought process of, you know, appropriate, requesting an appropriation of some more money to do more investigation, or whatever that entails, because obviously, there's been a lot of work done, I don't want to, I don't want to minimize what work's been done. But, I mean, there's going to be a ton of questions on these schematics, I mean, and I just don't, I don't feel like we as a group even know what our response would be.
So I have a couple of thoughts. One is, I mean, I think what I'm hearing everybody say, and I certainly feel this way, if the warrant article is to ask for design, I don't think any of us are there yet.
Yeah.
Right, so we're not, I mean, I, I think that this is a really interesting concept, but I think there's, I think there's enough question that, none of us are ready to say we're going to plunk money down on design, this is what we want to do. So I think for me, then, the question is, it's a really interesting option to amend the article for basically some supplemental feasibility money, so as of now, we've used some of our own money, not taken any money from the town, I mean, it all comes from the town, but, not taken any money through a warrant article to do this. So I think that that's a really interesting suggestion, but I just don't know what is the scope of that money, how much money are we talking about, and how much more feasibility is there that we can do?
So this cost $8,000.
Okay.
This work. This work is complete, there wouldn't be any other field other than getting more information on the specifics of Field Three. What would it cost to expand the track, is it even possible? That we have not explored past the boundary issues that Evan identified. So given that we have all of this information, and it's broken down, as you can see on the last page, by different phases, I don't think just adding on Field Three would be a significant additional amount of money.
Can I ask one more question, though? What about, what is the field, I don't know the number, between Doyle and the Field Three? But you know, like.
Yeah, the field right behind is Field One.
Was that reviewed?
It was, well, after we spoke, I, it's not large enough, just like the football field for, have a soccer field on it.
Okay.
The width is not, the field right behind.
But I think what Dr. McLeod just mentioned about, is going to be one of people's first questions, because I do think that when anyone was thinking turf field, they were thinking Field Three, the football field, was what was in my mind. Because the, the next question, and this happened to us with the new school building, is, well, what happens to the football field when you build this turf field down the other place? So I feel like if you don't have, if you don't have the expense budgeted or described for what it would take to make Field Three work, it's going to be a missing piece, and people are all, all going to want to know. So I think that's an important feasibility aspect.
Yeah, I agree.
So you said this work cost $8,000.
This, what you see tonight, yes.
This would cost nominally more than that, I mean.
That's what I'm thinking, John.
So, I mean, the, the other, and I know, we briefly discussed this, I think the other issue for consideration here is, we're talking about asking for less than $25,000. I, I personally don't want to put a capital article, I, first of all, I don't think we're supposed to put a capital article out there for less than $25,000, so I almost feel like the better call would be, in that case, to pull this, let's keep it moving forward, and we can even, because I think it'll come up as pulled, and people may have questions about that, and I'm sure we're going to be able to find $8,000 somewhere in our budget.
Well, I think it would be closer to two.
And I think we can definitely find.
Right? I think that's, it would be closer to, to that.
Yeah.
Right.
But, but I think the other thing is, is that then throughout the, as we move forward this process, it's also gathering, it's educating the community and gathering feedback and appetite, because, you know, as we look at this, this is, I mean, I think this is, so personally, I, my kids play on a lot of fields throughout the community. personally, I, my kids play on a lot of fields throughout the community. We are behind in this. There's no question about that. But, other communities have a range of options from their football field to fields that have three of these. And so, I think we want to be able to engage with the community, to provide them with some information, because the community may want to do this and the football field. And, and then it could just be a football and field hockey field, because we have soccer. I mean, I, I don't want to presume what the community wants, when this is going to be such a significant space for the community.
And I think that we're sitting here tonight where we are, because this wasn't a stated goal.
Yeah.
So, I know that we like to go to, to town meeting, well-prepared, obviously, in order to get the support that we want to get from the community. We don't want them thinking that we don't have all the information. And if we, we in fact don't, I think it's important for us to always come back to our strategic plan, the goals that we set for ourselves, and our priorities, and, and to consider other things that come before us. And so, this is, you know, in discussing all of this with Evan in preparation for Monday, and in feeling like we want to maintain control over this project, the school department does. So, it sounds to me that what I'm hearing from you is that we, you, it sounds like you would prefer us not to even have it on the town meeting floor.
I think based on what I'm hearing you say, if there are additional incremental costs, they would not be, really even rise to the level that you would request through a capital article. However, I think, you know, we'll have to vote if we're going to take this off the warrant, but to make the statement that we're not dropping the project, but that we're not ready to, to, at this point, for the town to vote on it. But, I think the opportunity, you know, first, in the summer, we always discuss the school committee goals, the superintendent goals. I think we need to have a conversation about how to move this forward, because there are some really important pieces that we need to make sure we have answers. So, first, what are the community's goals around the use of this type, type of a property? I heard really good questions at the Know Your Vote event on Monday about environmental impacts, and probably there are answers to that, but that's a big piece of community education. We, it would be really helpful to understand how the partnership between Parks and Rec and the town is going at Fruit Street, what the money is that is being generated, what the use is that they cannot accommodate requests that they're getting, so that we can factor that into what we think we might need here. And then, additionally, there's the, you know, the whole
Maintenance.
Maintenance, and then there's the Irvine-Todaro property.
Yep.
And that committee is just getting started. And it may be that if what the town is looking for is this, and it's related to youth sports, maybe they'd rather have it over there, and it's something separate from the high school. I just don't know that right now. So, my culminating comment is that, you know, I think that this is a great, even already, some very solid work has been done, so I don't want to lose momentum. I think if we bring this forward on Monday night, we're going to hit a brick wall, and we're going to lose a lot of momentum and take a giant step backwards. So, I think taking a pause so that we can, you know, expand the committee a little bit, clarify what the questions are, and how to engage the community is a good step. But what I will also say is that we may have the opportunity, if there is a special town meeting in the fall or the winter regarding the charter, that we wouldn't have to wait a full year. We may be able to bring it back if we work, you know, efficiently, and, and do some solid communication with the community. We may not have to wait the full year. And I, maybe that's a little bit of an in-between step for people who are disappointed if we're going to be taking it off on Monday, so.
I think it's a great point about special town meeting.
I also think that, I mean, in light of the fact that we, I can't take credit for it, like, we, as a committee, didn't have the success, but the elementary school building committee had the success of really getting out and getting opinions directly on what the town wanted for a new elementary school building. I actually think, as sad as this might be, you would get more response on this, because there's so many parents out there who are very invested in their kids' sports.
Sure.
And, and I, I do think that you'll, you may get some novel ideas on things. And I hadn't even thought about those other two properties and how that might be, come into play. So, I, I just would strongly suggest that we, when we do publicize for a public forum, that we don't limit ourselves to just the high school parents. This is like a district-wide thing, because it could impact from all age groups, and so
I think you can go beyond that, because there are people who live in town who have kids that don't go to the school district. Then, if this is a youth, this could be used as a youth sports facility, this, this impacts really everybody across the, and even, you know, adult, maybe adult leagues. So, yeah, we need to find a way to make sure we get it to everybody.
And I would just echo what Jean had said about, in trying to assess what kind of revenue we would be able to drive from this, because that obviously always helps with offsetting the cost that's involved.
I think it's a big part, yeah.
Okay. So, would anyone like to make a motion to remove Article?
Can I ask it?
Yep.
One more question.
This is just purely about the materials in front. So, the last page, where it talks about the cost estimate?
Mm-hmm.
I know this is very early stage, but I just want to make sure I know what I'm looking at here. So, it says, Option One. Is that, is that the cost estimate for this, the one on Fields Four and Five?
Yes.
So that, and that's design, construction?
That's everything.
Whole ball of X.
Whole ball of X.
Okay, thank you. That's, I just wanted to make sure I knew what I was looking at.
There is not one of these pages for Field Three in this.
Right. I wasn't sure what Option One was.
Yep, yep. Option One is that.
The only option.
The only option.
Thank you.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion to remove Article 27 from the artificial turf field from the warrant?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Mr. Graziano, seconded by Ms. Nickerson. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, sorry.
So, I just notify Mr. Kamala? Is that what I do?
Yes. And I'm, I'm a no.
Okay.
Go.
You're a no?
Yes.
Sorry, I didn't hear.
Okay, so, that was part of your report. I think we're good, Mr. Bishop. Thank you. And now, we're going to move on to middle, can we do middle school program of studies? Is Mr. Keller's here?
Thank you for taking me early. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Hello. Mr. Keller, were you here when I was singing your praises, or do I have to do it again?
I was not. Please do it again.
[laughing]
Watch the TV show.
Okay.
Before you came, I was just talking about what a, what a great public forum that you, you and Mr. Bishop had, along with your teachers, and, and how I think it built a lot of understanding about the math pathways, your openness to the questions that were, that were being asked, and then the follow-up that you've had since, I know, with parents, I think has gone a long way to not only establishing trust, but also in, in making people feel like they're being heard, and that they're, that you clearly, I mean, I know that all of those wonderful things are happening. But I think to do that and to be open to the public is really important. And then, again, to really be excited about the variety, the differentiation that's happening for kids. And then, the final comment is about the, the, we did talk very openly about the issue of overrides. And, and it was great to get that out, I think, out there with families, and to have them be part of the solution to being able to really, truly differentiate. So, having said that, I'll, I'll turn it over to you in terms of any questions or your program of studies.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that once again. So, so, yeah, so I, you have my program of studies in front of you. And, you know, the, the major changes, as Dr. McLeod has alluded to, really the only substantive, substantive change, changes are around math. And so, I'll, I'll try and capture this in a nutshell. But essentially, at the beginning of the year, I had a conversation with Dr. McLeod and with Bob Burlow at the time. And we assigned two teachers to, to evaluate our math program, particularly what we're doing for our students who are above grade level in their math skills and abilities. And they spent a good portion of the year, meeting with me, meeting with Dr. McLeod, meeting with Bob Burlow, and, and meeting with teachers, and gathering data from, from students. And ultimately, at the end of it, we are making a recommendation to, in some ways, kind of return to where we were in terms of a math program. I'll kind of give a, a little bit of brief history, which I think most of you probably know, but we had an accelerated-slash-advanced math program years ago. And then, with Massachusetts Common Core, we then pulled back a little bit on that math program in terms of dropping it in Grade Six and went to a Grade Seven and Eight program, where students were covering three years of material in two years. And in that first year, we had a lot of feedback from, from kids and from parents that it was too much, it was causing too much stress on, on students. As I said at the STEM Forum that night, you know, I think, you know, ultimately, at that point, we pulled back, and we made our program for students with above-grade-level skills and abilities less rigorous. And I think, I think we made a mistake at that point in time. I think we instead needed to look a little more closely at our criteria for entering that program, because we, we did have students who were succeeding. And however, we did make the move to an honors math program, where we had a much larger group of students in our above-grade-level math course. And so, ultimately, in looking at our program in this year, I, I would say, and I said that night at the STEM Forum, is I don't, I don't think we're serving either group of students really well. Those students who have significantly above-grade-level math skills, and those students who are at, at grade level, and the teachers have expressed that pretty regularly. We've heard that pretty loudly from parents, and, and students have expressed that as well. So, ultimately, a little bit of background there, but ultimately, what our recommendation is, essentially, in, in terms of our math program, is to leave Grade Six alone. We have traditionally, or I would say, in the last five years, we've had no separate math classes, or different math classes in Grade Six. Grade Seven, we would have three math courses. Essentially, we would have Math Seven, which is a co-taught, which is done in a, in a co-taught model. We would have our honors math class, where the majority of our students would be in. And then, we'd have a pre-algebra class. So, those would be our three offerings in Grade Seven. There is, there are placement criteria for students to be placed into there. We're going to have students take a fluency assessment. We'll look at their math MCAS. Unfortunately, we have to look back to how they performed when they were in Grade Five, because we don't get the results in enough time. We're actually planning on employing an Iowa, it's, it's a, it's an aptitude assessment. It's an Iowa Algebra Aptitude Assessment. Many school districts in the area are using that, and recommend it very highly. And then, we're going to look at their year-to-date math assessment grade, and then teachers will complete a rubric on students. And so, we're saying that students need to meet four of those five criteria in order to be placed in pre-algebra Grade Seven. And then, in Grade Eight, we will also have the Math Eight, which will be a co-taught model of, of math, and an honors Math Eight class, and that will be where the majority of our students are. And then, we'll have a Grade Eight Algebra One course, again, for those students who meet those criteria that I mentioned earlier. So, the only thing that's different in the Grade Eight placement than in the Grade Seven placement is that we're looking at the students who are currently in honors math. So, we're going to give the Iowa Algebra Assessment to all those students currently in the honors Math Seven course. Does that make sense?
We also talked with families that night about, that this is not the, this child's only opportunity. You know, if, if students are, meet these criteria and are appropriately placed in seventh grade for pre-algebra and then algebra, that, that's great. But if your child is not maybe ready to apply themselves, or haven't, hasn't determined that math is something that they really enjoy when they're only going into seventh grade, there's an opportunity to do that in high school. And the current way of doing that is, is to be able to double up on math in their, in their sophomore year. What I said earlier before you got here was that we have found a way of offering an alternative for the eighth-grade students that you, that you defined earlier on. That would be a one-year, a one-time thing. But there would be opportunities for, for select students in seventh grade who maybe were not in pre-algebra, but really want to, you know, do something over the summer, or really want to do something independently to improve their skills. We want to be aware of and sensitive to the fact that not all kids are ready for this level of rigor. And that's okay. We need to be responsive to that as, as a, as an educational community, as parents. It doesn't mean that if they don't do it in seventh grade, they, they forever will never get to BC Calc, because that's simply not true. And we, we discussed that that night. So, that kids can feel like, okay, there's still another opportunity. I had the opportunity to speak to some high school kids, students, and one of the students told me that very story, that, you know, I really wasn't ready when I was in seventh grade. And, but when I became a sophomore, I really was ready to apply myself. And now, he enjoys it. Now, this is something that he's not afraid of, it's not stressful, he's really enjoying it. And we want to be able to follow students' leads on those kinds of things as well, because they're, they're young. They're still young when they're going into seventh grade.
Yeah, I would just, I, I'm probably just going to parrot exactly what you said. But I mean, we see that all the time. And that was one of the reasons why we stopped it in Grade Six, is we felt it was really early to, to begin identifying. And we do see students in Grade Eight that weren't there in Grade Seven, but something clicks as they, as they get a little bit older. So, we definitely need to have flexible pathways.
And when we asked the math SML, you know, the teachers know. It's clear, the students who are just really, really great at math. Some kids are really great at writing. Some kid writes. There are areas of strength. And we asked her how many students, and she said 30. So, I think we were talking about BC Calc at that point. But, so, there are certainly students in seventh grade who teachers can identify, oh, yeah, they are ready for pre-algebra. And we want to get them into it. But we want to stress that that doesn't mean that if your, if your child isn't, that's still okay, too. And, and I think sometimes that could be more the boys than the girls, just developmentally. So, thank you for doing all of that work. And, and it feels like you've been able to, you know, certainly, address any concerns that have come your way from, from families.
Yes. I mean, I've, I've received, as I know you have as well, a few emails from parents, and, yeah, it's been largely positive feedback, which is some questions about how it's all going to play out, but.
So, we have a motion before us. Do you guys have any comments or questions on?
I just, I want to echo what Dr. McLeod said about the quality of the forum. It was the Thursday before April vacation, and even with old math, I sat in the back of the room and counted like 70 people, which is unprecedented for us. So, it's definitely a topic of great interest to parents. And, you know, I think you have worked really hard to constantly reflect on what you're offering, and the expansion of the pathways and the flexibility that you've put back in, I think, really puts the emphasis back on the right and current fit for the students, and takes some of the pressure off, or the fear out of making a wrong and permanent feeling choice. And so, just really, again, thank you to all of the teachers and, and both of you that were involved in that. I know it was a lot of time.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I appreciate you outlining the process that went into this, too, because I know that this is a program that you're probably looking forward to not reviewing again for a while, because it seems like it's something that we come back to a lot. But it seems like that, that it, it takes into account a lot of the feedback that has previously been received about flexibility. And just the fact that this is being proposed, and we haven't really got any communication about it, and there is no one here tonight to speak about it speaks to the effectiveness of the forum, because that hasn't been the case when changes were made previously. So, I think the communication, that, that is evidence of how effective that communication was.
I don't have anything new to add, Ellen, so I'm not going to extend your evening, but thank you very much, because I thought it was very thorough.
Thank you.
I have a question just about the criteria and the threshold. Do we have a threshold? Is there, and so, when you say, as long as you meet four out of five, then you're in, let's say it's 38 students. I mean, I, I don't really know how sections work.
Yeah.
But, or let's say it's only four students for one particular grade level. Is there a point with which we're going to end up reverting back, because we don't have enough students who meet four of the five criteria? Is there flexibility in the criteria? Or are you pretty certain you're going to get
Yeah, I mean
The right number.
So, Ms. Weiss, one of the math teachers, and Ms. Anasaskas, another one of the math teachers, they've really been leading this charge. And so, they've been talking to teachers about, you know, identifying the, the type of student that they feel best fits. They've also talked to several different surrounding middle schools. And so, I guess the short answer to your question is that I, I certainly in no ways want to set a cap on this. I, I don't want to say we can accept 34 students. That's, I've never wanted to do that when it's been honors, accelerated, advanced, and now algebra. So, having said that, though, if, if, you know, if, after going through this criteria, we had four students, I, I certainly would want to look at our criteria and say, maybe our, maybe our criteria are too rigid. We're basing our criteria right now. I mean, we, we've identified the parameters in each of these. The only thing that's a little bit unknown at this point is the algebra test. And so, we've gotten information from Natick mainly, is the one that's given us a lot of information around, and I think Milis is also using it, around what their kind of cut scores have been for the algebra aptitude assessment. But our, you know, what we're getting from surrounding towns and districts is that, that this range of numbers will, will yield those students who are ready for a pre-algebra and algebra. We've also talked to the, the company that makes the Iowa, and, and feel pretty good about that. But we won't know that until they actually go through the assessment, if that answers your question.
Yeah, I mean, it does, it does in that we, we don't think we're going to end up with too few.
No, we don't.
And then, we're going to come up with a plan And then we're going to come up with a plan to not have to cap it.
Right.
Because that's not, that's not part of the plan. So it does.
Okay.
Thanks. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve the middle school program of studies?
So moved.
Seconded.
Motion by Ms. Birchman, seconded by Ms. Nickerson. All those in favor?
Yes.
Yes, unanimous, and so carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I could finish my report if you want.
Sure.
Thank you for your flexibility, everybody.
I wanted to make a plug for Screenagers. It's gone out on listserv. It takes place Wednesday, May 11th, at the Hawkinson Middle School Auditorium. This is a really important topic. And we cannot even begin to imagine the unintended consequences and the influences that screen time is having on our, on our young people. The way they think, the way they communicate. I met a parent as I was leaving the middle school the other day, basically thanking me. I have nothing to do with it. It was all Mr. Keller. But saying, this is a real problem. And she said, and it's not just for my kids. It's a problem for me. And I need to identify. And it is, it is so true. I left the high school, the middle school yesterday. There were three students waiting for pickups, heads down, didn't even know I walked by, you know? And, and I think we, we worry about car accidents, distracted drivers. It's just become such an addiction and such a problem socially, emotionally, I think psychologically. And so it just is really important for people to come to this and to really start thinking about it and talking about it as families, certainly as educators. You know, the fact that we're one-to-one, no, the kids aren't on their phones, but they're certainly on their Chromebooks and their, their iPads, et cetera. So hoping that we have a great turnout, that students come with their parents, and there will be a panel following. And so I'm looking forward to, to a really, a really good discussion. And then the, the last part of my report tonight was on the response to public inquiry regarding recess. As we all know, we, we received in a petition. And I know that Ellen has responded to that. I think our, our, as you've noted tonight, John and Ellen, sorry, Jean, the turnout to that public forum that we had on, on the STEM pathways, those are, it's something that people are really interested in. And it really provides an opportunity for an open discussion. And we've done this in many ways. We, we did it beginning with, with full-day kindergarten discussions. You talked about the turf field and giving families opportunities for a conversation. And so I did, I guess it was the day after we received that petition, I had planned a coffee, one of the superintendent's coffees that had already been in place. And I had, you know, I'd say 10 people show up to that coffee for that purpose, because they really wanted to begin a conversation about us considering ways that we could offer more recess time at the elementary level. And so I did send a poll to all of you in anticipation of tonight's meeting, so that we could make an announcement tonight about an upcoming public forum for this very purpose, to have a discussion, you know, a brief presentation around our requirements, our time on learning requirements, our, our requirements as part of the association agreement, and current scheduling conflicts, those kinds of things, and then being open to, to just listening and, and responding. And so the common, the night in common for us was May the 10th, Tuesday, May the 10th. We have looked to see that this space is available, and it is, middle school library, beginning at 7 o'clock. And I will, if, with your approval, tonight, I will send a listserv announcement tomorrow, announcing this public forum to begin the discussion about something that, that is, is very important to a lot of people. Is that okay?
Yes, very good.
That date sounds okay?
Did you say seven?
I said 7:00 on the 10th. I didn't want us to have to be spending a lot of time looking at our calendars at the meeting tonight. So that's why I pulled you.
Yeah.
I love that doodle poll. I think that's just brilliant.
That's great, yeah.
Brilliant. So that is it. May the 10th, Tuesday, 7:00 PM, here at the middle school library. We really wanted to get this in in May, and I know it's a very busy time of the year. But certainly, any follow-up discussion following the forum, or further opportunities if people can't make that night, you know, I'm always open to providing opportunities for, for families, for parents. So certainly, we can begin there. And if there is time, if people are frustrated because they're busy that night, I'm more than happy to offer additional times. Okay?
I just, I just want to add to that because we did hear from Anne Boach Trump tonight, requesting a committee, and requesting specifically of the superintendent and the school committee to form a recess subcommittee. And my response with, which I shared with the school committee to a parent who had earlier proposed that, was that we would do the public forum first, and then based on the information exchange there, vet the idea of whether or not it's appropriate to have a committee at this time, or when it would be appropriate to start a committee, if that was still of interest after that exchange of information. And so I don't know if anyone else wants to weigh in on that, or if that was, everyone's agreeable with that response and just have a public forum, and then we can discuss after that the need for a committee.
It feels, I mean, it feels like the right order.
Okay.
To have that discussion and the information sharing first, and then determine how best to take it forward, whether that's a committee or something else. So I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay. So now we're moving on to the school committee chair report. And not on here, but my first report is going to be about the Tadaro Irvine property, which maybe went with liaisons, but I'm not even sure where we are in our agenda.
Sorry.
Oh, because do we do, we didn't do ESBC either.
We didn't. I just, I want to make, I don't care when we do it. I just, we have some updates, so.
So Irvine-Tadaro, my only update is that I assume you guys might want to appoint someone else or vote someone else as the liaison member to that before their, before their next meeting.
Which is one?
Which is one.
Which is, um, just a second. I suppose you'll do that when you have your new committee member. We don't, so we just had one this week, meeting, so it probably, it will be within, in two weeks. But I don't, we don't have a date yet.
Okay.
So fair enough, I'll bring it back at the beginning of May. I just want you guys to think about it. Who wants to raise their hand for that?
Not yet.
It's really, there's no end dates. The committee, that's going to go on perpetually so that we can talk about every possibility for that many acres of land. I'm selling it, just in case anybody really wants to do it. So that said, they did meet earlier this week. Where the, the conversation is based around what and who we should involve with respect to finding out what the interests are for the property.
Are they planning on meeting all summer?
Actually, the work accomplished.
Are they planning on meeting all summer, or can we wait until we have our liaison discussion in the summer?
I think they plan on meeting basically every two weeks, but I will.
Isn't the answer to who they should involve, everybody?
I guess in, in what way?
Well, I just, I feel like-
Are you going to send out a survey and get everybody's ideas of what their-
Well, these are from like town boards and committees, right? Or shouldn't, or organizations?
Oh yes, they would like to go further than just come back to your committee and, and see what your committee's property uses are. They would like to actually poll the community at large. So on the committee are three abutters.
Mm-hmm.
And then representatives from a number of town committees, parks and recs, planning, the trails committee, school committee, board of selectmen. But they are not just interested necessarily in what the boards want.
Right.
That's the first step. But then they're interested in what the community wants.
Okay.
I think that's actually a really good idea. But I mean, because there's so many oppo, we just talked about turf fields. There's that opportunity. There's what do you want to do with the center school building? I think, you know, it would be who, someone in the town hall to really do a comprehensive survey that all three of those groups could access information from and really use in their planning, so.
Or a Google poll.
A doodle.
So are you saying we should move the center school over there?
Nothing.
So next, for my report is the end-of-cycle evaluation feedback. So thank you all for doing your individual feedbacks. As you saw, when I sent out the email with the summary, first we'll talk about the process. So the process was that I sat down with Dr. McLeod, rotating the evaluation. So no one was particularly on top. And, well, first we went through and we did the, I'll say the numbers, but in general, the-
You said in no particular order?
The ratings, the ratings. We started. Then as we went through each of the goals and we added comments, we would rotate that pile, right? So no, it's not like, we always looked at Jean's comments first, or Lori's comments first, or John's comments. So we tried to get a fair representation of comments from everybody. We, if they were redundant, we didn't include every word from everybody. And then with respect to areas of improvement, same thing. If they were redundant, we didn't include them. Or if we felt that they were more directed to goal planning for next year, we didn't include them. But that said, if there's something, if there are comments that you had, you can bring them up in this discussion, or so that the rest of the committee's aware of them. And we can also edit the summary document, which we'll hopefully be signing at the next meeting. So, and then I guess how the rubric came about was I had asked a question about a particular goal of Dr. McLeod's, which had different, who sort of varied with respects to our, how we rated her, whether it's proficient or exemplary. And so I think it was, anyway, with one of them, I said, well, I guess I don't really know what it means to be exemplary. And so then that's when she said, you've got to look at the rubrics. So I don't know if everyone else that did that, did that when they went through their evaluation. But I thought that gave us a good, sort of good ground, or place to start with respect to how we're rating her. Because, you know, it's, I, I guess it was hard for me to sort of, what, what is the spectrum? And so how do you get from proficient to exemplary? What more did we expect from her? What could she have done? And so the rubrics seemed to, at least for me, help me and maybe make me want to modify some of my ratings. So that's why I brought it up to all of you. So I can't remember how we did this last year, but we can start with step one, which was the progress towards her goals, the professional practice goal. Two folks had met, I'm sorry, three people had met and two had exceeded. The student learning goal, all five committee members had met. And the district improvement goal, all five had met. So I don't know if you guys have any, any questions on that? Want to talk about why you may have done met versus exceeded, or if you want to change your assessment or rating, I should say?
So does the rubric help with that particular one? I thought the rubric really wasn't for the lower-
The rubric is for the next part.
Yeah.
Well, the professional practice goal, yes, you can go to the rubric under 4C Communication. It's the same idea. So if you go to 4C on the rubric, which I'm just scrolling down, 4C slash communication demonstrates strong interpersonal written and verbal communication skills. So proficient is defined as demonstrates, basically it repeats it. So that's not great communication. And then exemplary demonstrates strong context and audience-specific interpersonal written and verbal communication skills is able to model this element. So that's the difference on the rubric. It looks like under professional practice goal, when I look on this grid, Ellen, it, it says three and two. I don't know where we messed up on there. And then on the front page, it says three and, the other way around. It has it the other way around. So I'm not sure why. But nevertheless, it's something that because it was one goal that there, that you were not unanimous on, it was worthy of discussion. See where I mean?
Look, I'm going to pull it up here.
On this page, it's the other way around.
Which page is it the other way around? But those are, aren't, okay, sorry.
It's, it's the, the first page.
Oh, on page five?
Yep. So that is my rating on the professional practice goal, which is goal one. And then the student learning goal is goal two.
So my question between proficient and exemplary, and I remember this last year, is that what I find to be the difference between the two, the distinction, according to the rubric, not my distinction, but that, is that you can model it. I never quite understand what that means. Model it for who? Model it for your administrative team?
Yeah. So they, I think the different, that's a great question, Lori, and they just throw that in, right? They do. It's for every single one. And so you feel like that's not much of a distinction. But actually, the distinction, I think, that is pertinent under communication, is that it's context and audience-specific. I think that makes the, the distinction around communication for that one, as opposed to modeling it. I think sometimes when modeling, when they use that language, what they're talking about is that you, you could be somebody that could provide professional development for other superintendents in that area.
Right, which is difficult for me, because I'm like, how would I know if?
Well, that's the problem with this system, because you're evaluating, you're evaluating me. And sometimes, and I've tried hard this year to give you more evidence, because some of the things that you're evaluating me on, you don't get to see me do.
Right.
So when we talk about context and audience-specific, interpersonal, that would be, you know, when I'm having difficult conversations with, with principals, for example, or in a personnel situation. You don't sit in on those. So you don't know if, what you see typically publicly, if I am, in fact, context and audience-specific. But you have seen me in enough varied roles, whether it be with children, or whether it be in a public forum, or whether it be with you or the board of selectmen, that you may see a difference, that my, my communication style is context-specific. So you can consider that.
Well, I mean, in light of that distinction, I was one of the met raiders, graders, I don't know how to put it. But then I would change it to exceeded.
So that's the mistake between two and three, because during our conversation, I changed mine to three. So that's the difference between page one and page two. So in fact-
It was already at three.
Yeah, it's at three.
Now it's at four.
Okay.
And I think, again, so reflecting upon the rubric, as I was thinking about this today, I, I would, I would tend to agree. I was also one of the met, but in reflection upon it, you know, specific examples that I can think of, probably the one that sticks the most in my mind is just the process with the elementary school building. And I know I mentioned it in my, in my particular evaluation, was the number of different audiences to which you were able to present effectively the same material, but in a very different way to recognize what was going to be important to the K-1 teachers at center school versus what was going to be important to the Chamber of Commerce. What, what were the highlights that you wanted to make depending on the audience? And I did see a, a real adaptability to that. So, yeah, I, I think some of the, I think some of the challenges with this system are, in some cases, there's a desire, possibly slightly unfairly, to, to move the bar every year. But the rubric doesn't move the bar every year. So I think maybe by putting it in a met, we've gotten used to the fact that this is a strength of yours.
You know, I think, I think-
And that's, and that's not fair. So I think that that's, I think that that's, that's part of it, too.
I think that's why I get, we get to set new goals every year. And this is one I've had for two years.
Yeah.
And so I have, it has been a real priority of mine on all sorts of levels, whether it be communicating, really being out in front of it with social media, particularly with all of you, is a really high bar to, to be able to manage with, with the increasing speed of social media. But it has been something that I've taken as a very, very critical part of, of my leadership. And so I appreciate you recognizing it as something that I'm-
And I think it, I would also highlight again, you, you brought up with the social media. It's a continuous improvement area for, for everybody. But I think I particularly appreciate also that you've been reflective as things have happened, where you sort of realize that sometimes change in practice is necessary, right? So things may be that you didn't necessarily think we should be updated on, needed to be updated on right away.
Right.
We talked about some of the impacts and that process changed. So I'm just adding to why I'm changing my rating.
Okay, thank you.
So just a procedural question here. If we're changing our rating as a discussion tonight, should we keep track and then resubmit to you? Or like, how does this work?
No, I'm just going to keep track on the, on the summary.
Okay. So this is the missing step that we didn't have the first year.
Yeah.
Where we got to have this discussion and then come up with, you would come up with your decision- with your decision, and then the final, the final report will be submitted at the next meeting? And voted on.
Our individual ones are artifacts. They don't actually, they don't actually get submitted, or they're just...
Just this one.
Got it.
And we'll remove the numbers, too, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Submit to Desi, it'll be public, and...
But I think your point is, it does, we don't need to, if we change what we submitted to you, we don't have to go back and change it and resubmit it, because that doesn't go any further anyway. It's just the final one.
Got it.
And then you'll vote next time.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, goal, student learning goal two, I think I got this right, we all, all five had met. I'm not sure if there's, we want to have a discussion about it? Anyone?
I guess my only question, too, is, sorry.
That's all right.
Is that, so you both sit down and go through this, do you get the opportunity to read through all of ours, even though we make a summary that highlights it, and there are some redundancies, because obviously we have the same things to talk about?
Yes, I've read them all.
Okay.
Yep. And we actually did it together. We sat together and looked, discussed whether or not it was redundant. So it was very thorough. Gave me some great feedback, some great things to think about.
Okay.
And it'll help when we have this conversation about goal setting, too.
And next year, we can do it in two years.
We're just getting good at it, we get digging it off.
Okay. Goal three, operational systems, develops and executes effective plans, procedures, routines, and operational systems to address a full range of safety, health, and emotional and social needs. I don't know if anyone wants to discuss this one, but this is already in the exceeds by the majority.
Which one are you on?
I don't know, I have no idea.
Aren't you supposed to be here?
No, here's the problem.
I'm jumping to the...
They don't line, they don't exactly line up.
They don't line up.
Yeah, the problem under district improvement, unlike, you're doing great.
This is, I, like, I was in that chair last year, this is not easy.
No.
I actually shouldn't look at it on here, it's not helping.
Do you want my help or not?
Yes, go ahead.
If I'm not helpful. So the problem here that happens is that under professional practice, there's one goal. Under student learning, there, there's one goal. But under district improvement, I actually had two.
Okay.
So you are giving me a rating, but when you break it down and look at the first of those two district improvements, I actually got an exceeded, because three of you voted exceed, exemplary, and two voted proficient. But then with the opposite, not the opposite, but then under community and business engagement, that was the effective partnerships with families, community, that one was four proficient and one exemplary. So that would be a place where you might want to have some discussion.
For the...
For that rating.
I'm sorry, you said on district improvement, three.
Mm-hmm. Three of you voted exemplary, two of you voted proficient.
Okay, and on four, it was four proficient and one exemplary. Okay, got it.
You're saying we add that together for this one on the top?
I don't know if you add, or if you just talk about it...
So we're six versus four, if you did add it.
Yeah, that's true.
No, I think that's, that makes sense, because then, if one person moved on one, then you end up moving, or being a tie.
So one of the things that Ellen and I talked about was sometimes the disconnect between what we read in the comments and what I received on the rating. So the comments under operational systems was consistently just how many, how many, how much, many improvements have been made, and how significant that's been around the school facilities, operational system. This includes the new building project, this includes all the work with the director of buildings and grounds. So there was a lot of really positive comments. And then, I guess the conversation that Ellen and I had, which sometimes led us to the rubric, was, well, what, what more would you have liked to have seen accomplished under that goal? And then under the next one, community and business engagement, this is effective partnerships. So this is the community organization, tech, accept, families, cultivating effective partnerships. So that's the, the same discussion. I don't know if we can pull up the indicator, if that would help. Under indicator 2A dash two...
I can't tell you how much I hate this document.
For exemplary, under 2A dash two, creates and maintains a district environment in which custodial and other staff take personal responsibility for keeping the campus clean, attractive, welcoming, and safe, is able to model this element. Proficient is develop systems and procedures for the effective supervision and supportive custodial clerical food services and other staff effectively, so that the campus is clean, attractive, welcoming, and safe. So I think, looking at the rubric, I, I actually think we are this year, although I think that you did make great improvements, and I also think that I rated you exemplary. I think that we actually are really within the proficient. I'm not going to change my ratings, but, but if I think about it, that's really what you've done this year. It's too bad that it hadn't been done prior, but you've really put procedures in place to supervise and get everybody on board. But I don't know that I've seen, or that I would see, the sort of personal responsibility...
Yeah, I would agree with that.
So I think, so I think that's a tough one. It's a tough one to be exemplary.
I think that's, I do think that's sort of where I was, too. I think it's been a, I, so it was a focus area for you.
Yep.
I don't think it was, if I recall, I don't think it was a goal last year, I think it was in response to situations last year. But I do think we're, I do feel like it is, it does fit into that, that proficient standard.
This one, the rubric doesn't help.
Well, I guess, so, I guess for, so, and if I, if I read the rubric, and the way I think about it, when you say like, in which custodial and other staff take personal responsibility for keeping the campus clean, I, I mean, being candid here, I mean, I think that you've had a tremendous amount of improvement in this area, but I think it took a lot of your own management. And so I think the next step is, how do we make sure that that happens without you having to, that, that feels like the difference between those two, to me. Does that make sense?
I would agree.
Can I just argue the other side? I think that, you know, we saw a lot of evidence about the new, it's not a spreadsheet, but the new system. And, and I think that what that system does with the amount of, you know, the response time, the who did it, the when, what was the response, and the follow-up, and breaking it down so that the school principals are driving that process more directly within their own buildings and whatnot, I think that that's, that, that is exactly what you created. Whether, whether people, if you're, if you're talking about, do people feel internally personal responsibility, and that's their motivator, we can never measure that. But I think you set up a system where they are held responsible and accountable in a, in a different and more clearly defined way. And so that's why I went for exemplary on that one, and I'm going to stick there, but you all do what you want to do.
Well, I, can I respond? I appreciate that feedback. I feel like this is one where it very much was a joint, a joint goal. And so I feel more comfortable with a proficient, quite honestly, because this did not happen only because of me. I think there were a lot of people that were really part of improving. Of course, most, most notably, Mr. Rogers, for whom this was a shared goal. And so I'd like to, to share that credit with him, because it will be his responsibility to sustain it. And that's what's important about this, is putting the systems in place. But if, if I'm doing a good job with my leadership, that should be able to be evidence of sustainability. So, yeah, I, I guess I...
You're not going to talk me down, but I appreciate...
It's one of the things, again, for me, it makes this, this, the way this process is structured so difficult, because I do look at that as, so this probably won't be on your goals next year.
Well, definitely.
So if the systems that you've put in place take hold and, and maintain that district environment, we're not going to measure you on it next time, so the exemplary won't reflect, like, that's...
You will, though. You won't directly under my goals, but that's what's crazy about this, under standard two, you still will.
Yep, that's a good point, okay.
So we're good.
Remind me of that in two years.
But I, I think a year ago, it came up, too, that it's really difficult when the goals actually include stuff that's not measurable, right? Because I think there are some other goals or in the rubric that sort of make it seem like personal pride, right? And it's just, there's things that you just can't, you can't measure. So that's just, and I do think we said it last year, that's just something to keep in mind when we look at how, how, what the goals are that you're going to set for yourself, and sort of have an upfront discussion about how, is everything in this rubric really measurable, and to the extent it's not, what's our plan?
Yeah, that's a good point. We're, we're getting better every year.
Sorry, not to belabor this. So we're talking about goal three right now, right?
Yeah, except...
Kind of goal three here, which is, which is a part of this third line here.
So we're not changing the met, but then what I was trying to figure out is, is anything changing on the three? Because we are in this, like, we are in exemplary for the majority, but...
Well, you have to look at the next one first, I think, that's what's tricky about this one. Indicator, goal four, is actually indicator 3A2, it's not indicator 2A2.
I see, I see.
So if you will go down to 3A2, I think this is a really helpful one, if you look at the difference between proficient and exemplary there. I think that calls out the...
Got it.
The fact that the partnerships improve district effectiveness is what calls out the difference there, yeah.
All right, thank you. I feel like you need to go to actua real school for this. Okay. So we're saying we don't need to change that?
I think, are we talking about 3A2? Promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff through effective partnerships? No?
Yep, but then it's, yeah, but it's indicator 3A2, under that one, yep.
And so, do you want me to read out the rubrics?
I think they're all looking at it.
Okay.
Are you?
I am. Would you like to?
I was, but you can go, you don't have to read it, it's right here.
That's a tricky, that's another one that's just impossible.
District, the community, partnerships with community organizations, community members that improve district effectiveness.
Yeah, that's, how do you measure that?
Well, and really, the distinction is increasing the types and numbers, which I, if you, starting from a high bar, it's hard to...
Yeah, the different, what I did differently this year is I prioritize my relationship with, with, as you know, with accept and with tech, and with commerce, and with, I made, making sure that I made time to get to those things a priority, because I just was not attending them regularly with everything else that was going on. Because it was a goal of mine, I, I feel like I met it, because I did, and I gave you evidence of, of, of my participation in, in all of those. But I can't, yeah.
So I'm going to add to that, because I don't, I don't know that it's just, I mean, I think that you worked hard this year to have a different relationship with the Board of Selectmen through the budget process. I think, I don't know if the 300th committee in that, the big party last year really falls within this year's, but I kind of think it does, and I think that your visibility there, and participation in those events, and then partnership with the HCA, which is really starting to come to fruition, the 26.2 Foundation, and the BBA, and that contract, and sort of actually getting back on top of something that hasn't, we haven't had to deal with in 10 years. So I think there has been an increase, just in the past year, of partnerships. Or, or the, the efficiency with those partnerships.
And to keep coming back to the, I mean, coming back to the same thing I keep bringing up, but this is a pretty significant event for us as a district, was the, the partnership and engagement around the building, not just with the building, the community support, but also the leadership role that you took with, with DRA, the MSBA, Compass, you know, to ensure that we've effectively moved through that project, was something that I observed
I'm not disagreeing with anything that they're saying. I mean, it's more just making me wonder, are we, are we looking to change something else? Like, that's what I'm trying to gauge. Or are you just explaining where your rating was?
Well, I think that the idea would be, right, that if we felt like, hopefully no one comes to this meeting feels, and feels like, well, I gave my rating, and, you know, my heels are dug in, this is where I'm at. So I guess if you hear other people's reasons for their ratings, then it's an opportunity to say, well, that's not the way I looked at it, or that is the way I looked at it, or, oh, you're changing my mind, or you can just say nothing.
I mean, when I look at the rubric, what we were just discussing, the difference between the two is really about deepening the partnerships and, and continuing to foster those relationships.
And improving district effectiveness.
Yeah.
Which is tough to measure, but that is one of the differences between the two.
Like, what is the district effectiveness?
That's right, I mean, again, if...
Whether or not we're using munis appropriately?
Well, so think about it with the budget cycle. I mean, when we went into the Board of Selectmen budget meeting, and this, I don't know if it made it into the final comments, it was in one of my comments, but I actually think the pressure, I'll say, to invite Board of Selectmen or involve them in our budget process, it did improve the efficiency. And we basically went into the Board of Selectmen meeting, and Brian Herr said, "Yep, I watched your process, very good job, very thorough, you know, I've got no questions." And so, to me, that seems hugely efficient.
I, I don't, see, that's the thing, like, I would say that our effectiveness as a district in working with the town has greatly improved since you've been a mem, you know, our superintendent for our district. There's been a huge amount of initiatives that you've had to push through in a short period of time, and the trust that they have in your decision-making for any of those groups has increased. So that's why I'm kind of like, maybe we should be at exemplary. That's where I'm going with it. There's nothing I disagree with, with what's been stated. I think if anything, it's a reminder of the amount of things that we've witnessed over the year.
Okay. So we, that's goal four.
Can I say, too, because one thing to note is, we're going through this process in public, which is always a challenge, and we do have a studio audience tonight, as well as a television audience. And it's important to note that as we're going through this, that there are, for people who are not familiar with this, there are five ratings along the continuum, and all the discussions we're having tonight are ratings that sit somewhere between met and exceeded, or proficient and exemplary. So I think overall, I want to make sure that the community gets the message tonight that the, the overall evaluation is extremely positive. And just as we're having these, what seem like splitting hairs discussions, I think it's important for people who haven't stared at the rubric for the hours that we have to understand really what we're talking about. And we want to make sure we give the fairest evaluation possible, but that's the margins we're working between, are in those two highest rating buckets.
Thank you for clarifying that, and, or pointing that out. And there are 33 elements, by the way, that you're evaluating me on, in addition to my four goals, so, yes.
Well, and I, I mean, I know you and I talked about that this morning, is that the discrepancies that we have as a committee between our ratings are between met and exceeded, or proficient and exemplary, they're not between, did not meet significant progress, or, and no one went, no one disagreed going down, it was all about going up. So I would echo what John stated.
Scrolling through, yeah, I think we're 100% top two boxes.
There.
Yeah.
So do we want to talk about the general evaluator comments? Did anyone see anything in there that they wanted to add to, or, or discuss?
Were there any other areas, though, that we were like, split that you were concerned about?
Well, I'm not sure you, you, I don't think you, you voted on that final number four.
Yeah, I don't think we did either, and I...
I think you had the discussion, I was hearing a lot of examples of exemplary.
I'd probably move mine up to exemplary, just on that one.
You weren't that one.
No, the one was...
No, I was not that one.
I would move mine, I would move mine as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I think that, I was actually met on that one, and I, I think a lot of the comments, I agree with everything that you've said, I think I factored that in, into other pieces, maybe differently the way that, that you do, so I, I have no objection to moving it. I, I'm comfortable in either place, but...
I'm glad you brought that up, I thought you were...
Which has the role forward of moving one of these up to exceeded, right?
Yep.
So that moves number four to exceeded, and then that also means district improvement goals on the front page goes to exceeded.
Wow, awesome, thank you. Say goodnight, we should go play lottery. I think so. I think so.
Okay, are we ready for page three?
Oh, God.
We're only on page three.
This is the longest part. The rest will go quickly.
So, here, we had the rate impact on student learning, and we're already in high, so I don't, with the majority being in the high, I don't, I don't know that we need to discuss it.
Right.
But we can. And then, there's the evaluator comments, again, this is where I tried to go before we voted on number four. I tried to have a representative group of everybody's comments, but if there's something that you had a question about that someone else said, or something that you wanted to add, so that it's more comprehensive when it goes, when it leaves our hands, let me know.
I was comfortable with.
Yeah, I thought the comments were right on.
Okay. Do you want to, good.
No, great.
All right, great.
Page eight, I think, right? That was a bad step. Well, because page seven, there's a complete agreement throughout.
Well, but again, it's just a matter of, if you saw comments, you had a question about them, or if you think that something else needs to be said to be more comprehensive.
So, I'll make the overall statement that I was comfortable with all of the comments that you put together.
Are you just, you just want this to be over?
That too, but I was also comfortable with all of the comments that you put together.
So, there were none of your comments that you felt were left out, that you felt were really important to include?
I didn't.
No, and the other problem was, is that there were a lot of comments that were so similar to mine, I couldn't remember if it was mine or somebody else's.
There was a lot, there was a lot of.
I did, because I was starting to remember.
Yeah.
There was a lot of.
They're like, copy me?
But that was great, right? I mean, the fact that there was so much.
Very consistent experience, so that's good.
For five different people, and that's the other thing for people to understand at home, is that you all did this independently. And, so that, that was nice to see, the consistencies, both from the perspective of places where, where you acknowledge a strength, and places where I have improved, that was really great feedback, where you've said that I've improved on things that you've pointed out to me as part of the mid-cycle, which is what this whole process is about. And then areas of potential growth for me to consider for the next round. So, overall, it was very great feedback.
I also think it's really interesting for you, that you've had the same five people review you the last two years, which isn't always the case.
That is a good point. Yeah. Comment, Jean, were there any comments?
No, I did have some, but I already discussed them with you, so I'm comfortable with the way that it's written.
So, we're good. So, we are on page eight.
I just noticed you had your coat on.
You know what?
I know, my hands are freezing.
The temperature just went down.
So, on page eight, we have the management and operations rating. I'm sure this is similar to the discussion we already had. Except that, and you can tell me, you disagree, but let's, I think we should at least talk about two D and two E. The others seem, either we were in agreement, or she was exemplary. Is that, is that a fair, sorry.
You mean two A? Because two D is four to one.
Yep.
Yep, but two, two A, she already ends up in exemplary.
Oh, okay.
Unless someone wants to talk someone else down, I think.
I think it was the one that you and I struggled with, Ellen, was two E.
Two E.
So, in this case, many of the comments called out, what a great job, what a great process it had been, you all identified how positive having the Board of Selectmen, not only attending our meetings, but at the table, which was at your, you invited them to be part of that, which was wonderful. So, it just seemed like it was, it was kind of on the cusp there, and it's not a big deal, because it's, it's between proficient and exemplary once again.
So, I, so I'll just, again, we've, I will say that, that I, I was one of the proficient ones, and I felt like that there were significant improvements, as there have been every year, to the budget process, I thought, and I think I put this in my individual comments, I thought the inclusion of the Board of Selectmen was, was a great idea, and it made it effective. I still feel like there's a little bit of ceiling, a little bit of room to the ceiling on the process, in terms of, actually, our sort of engagement and the clarity around with these of the presentations, where our feedback is supposed to come in, and that came up when we got to the fees discussion as well. So, I, again, I'm, you know, proficient's a really good rating, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
And so, I just think from that perspective, there were still times where it felt a little bit like the expectations were unclear, which is why I landed there, and so.
Yep, sure enough.
That was basically my same, my same analysis. I think it was a great improvement over the year before. And I think we're, we're moving in a strong direction, but I definitely think we can all.
And by the way, I think as a, you know, a shout out to all of the educators and all of my administrative team, they go through this exact same process. Of course, it's a different rubric for teachers and a different rubric for administrators, and superintendent has their own. But proficiency is the stand, is the goal, and the, it's, it's not a bad thing to not get exemplary, it doesn't, it, it is, it is our goal. You would expect to have exemplary, maybe in some areas in your work, just like we talked about the kids who happen to be better at math. So, I appreciate the feedback.
They don't have to go through it on TV, though.
But they don't have to, no. All right. So then I think that was, Ellen, I don't think there was in.
Yep, there's family concerns, three D. Addresses family and community concerns in an equitable, effective, and efficient manner. And so, there's three, proficient, two exemplary.
We can look at the rubric if that would help.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, which rubric?
Three, three D.
Three D.
Three D.
Proficient. Do you see it?
Mm-hmm.
So, the example I thought of here, and I think, I think I'm one of the exemplarys, but if someone else did it, maybe, no, I'm one of the exemplarys, and the reason I did it is I thought that the, and it's in my comments, but sort of the lack of concern, or the proactive communication around changing the principal and the leadership team at Elmwood was very well received, and so, so the change was very well received, and I take that as really positive feedback on proactive communication, and something that we haven't seen before when changes like that are made. I mean, generally, there are at least some questions. And I, to me, I just, I really appreciated that, and, you know, we can take the Hopkins proactive communication also into account here, but I think that we're making a really big effort to keep people informed before making changes. And it's, it's working out really well, where we're getting, we're not getting the negative feedback.
I agree with you, I was, I was the other exemplary, I think, but, and what I would just add to that is that the work that you did with the principals to increase the consistency of newsletters and communication approaches as well, I think also just bolsters that, what Ellen just said. But I think, you know, we've, we've already said several times tonight at this table about how you have tailored your response, approach, plan to, to many audiences. And I think routinely, when I go around town, I, I always hear from across the town, what a great listener you are, how approachable you are, and that is definitely something that has had a positive, you know, waterfall down through the rest of, of the district, and I think done, gone a long way towards reducing the complaints that, that we tend to get, or have gotten over the years.
So, wait. Sorry, were you?
Okay.
I just, the only thing is, I, the, the things that, and this may be a difference, I put, bucketed a lot of what you just talked about into communication, not necessarily family concerns. And, you know, addresses family and community concerns in an equitable, effective, and efficient manner, again, we're playing at the highest margins here, right? I, I was one of the proficient. It's not that I have any concern about it.
So, a couple other things, just if you're wavering, that I put in the family and community concerns bucket are the school calendar committee and conversation and recommendations that we had at the beginning of the year, the public forum that we just talked about right now, about around math pathways. You know, those are both huge topics of community and family concern. Already, we're setting up the forum to start a conversation about recess, so I just find, you're right that we don't see if an individual family comes to you with a concern about their child, that's way outside of the scope of our observation, but as far as, you know, on the broader level, I, I think that.
So, what you actually pointed me to, I went back to my, my own, and it wasn't an example you brought up, but it is an example that I brought up. And as I reflect upon it, I think I would move it to, move this to exemplary, using the example of the, the inquiries about school lunch program. That was, I thought, exceptionally handled in the way in which you and had Mr. Dumas and, I always forget Kevin's last name.
Welch.
Mr. Welch, engage with the concerned community members, and really developed a great partnership. We saw that in the, in the Whitson's report, I witnessed it firsthand in some of the interactions that he had at the, at the wellness fair. So that was an example of really addressing a community concern in a, in a very effective way, that actually created, I think, an effective partnership. So, I'm moving that one up.
And, in the interest of full disclosure, I was only proficient there, except, given all my self-talk here, I'm moving myself to exemplary. So, I think we're good.
All right, well, thank you, everybody, that's.
Okay, so now.
Not, almost, but I just want to thank you for that. Sometimes when you tell me these things, I almost forget that, it's a nice reminder. All right, I don't think there's anything else, Ellen.
The only one is managing conflict. Three and proficient, two and exemplary. I'm going to check my own individual rating before I start talking. This one was really.
So, this is a hard one for you, because you don't see, I manage a lot of conflict every single day. So, and you don't get to see much of it. So, let me, let me just see, let's see, four F.
Contract negotiations count?
Yes. Grievances.
Grievances.
Consensus building, what is it, four F?
Four F four?
Oh, it's a whole section? Managing conflict, and then there are three elements, I suppose, under it. So, if you look at the rubric, I did rate myself at, as exemplary at the beginning of this year. And, because these are all things that I do, and I do model this element, I model it for, I don't want to call anybody out at this meeting, so I model it for members of my administrative team who maybe need some help in managing conflict. And here's a good example about talking about managing, of how they put in, can model this element. Conflict resolution is something that I've been trained in early on, because of my psychology background, whether it be with families, or students, or fellow administrators. I do a lot of helping my team to manage conflict in a very positive way, to be able, we've done a whole book study on difficult conversations, for example. And we use a portion of our admin council to talk about, how do you resolve in a, in a respectful way differences of opinion that arise? And we've been using it in, partially in the evaluation cycle, but also when maybe administrators have to have difficult conversations with families. Always acknowledging that if, if you're having a difficult conversation and somebody is upset, that's the first place you begin, is by acknowledging the person's feelings and that they're upset. And, so, I do a lot of modeling of this, perhaps in a situation with a fellow administrator, it could be that they're in conflict with somebody that they're evaluating, and what I will often do is pull together a meeting and then run the meeting, so that the administrator can observe me doing it. And so, it is something that you don't get to see me do very often, that I, I don't know what evidence I could give you, because it's often around personnel issues or evaluation issues. I think the differences that we should call out, maybe, to help us with this one, is where, what's the difference between exemplary and proficient? Part of it is modeling the element, which I do, I mean, I, I did it twice today, just at central office, with a couple of situations that were happening, where there was a difference of opinion between a couple of departments, and they just were not able to hear each other's point of view. So, I have now established, over my time with my team, that people will come to me, and because they know that I will help to resolve the issue, and we, we can agree to disagree, but at least we can have conversations around conflict that end up with at least people feeling that they've been heard. So I just want to throw that out there.
Well, and I think we could, I mean, while you're right, we don't, we're not in, we don't belong as part of those conversations, we can observe from the agendas that you showed us, from the admin meetings, that that is an ongoing, because I know the difficult conversations book was actually last year, but I was, I was pleased to see, right, it was.
But we did the follow-up this year.
Right, and so that's what I was going to say, so I was pleased to see on the agendas that that is still remaining a consistent and, and practiced.
And the principals will quote, like, they will call it out when they're saying that, you know, this is something that they've used, but things that, phrases that come out to me in this one is, provides professional development for the administrative team, so that's the, the book study that we do. And then in the second section, constructive and respect, respectful manner, and empowers and supports administrators to use these approaches, so that's under exemplary. And then the final one is encouraging dialogue and different points of view. I do that all the time. So, I think, this is one I feel strongly about, although I know, you know, I've given you many, many examples, but I do feel that this is a strength. You can tell because I've talked about it more than I have weighed in on many of the other things, so. For what then?
So, it's interesting that, why did you rate yourself proficient?
You didn't.
Where?
She rated it exemplary.
You did?
On the rubric, I did.
No, I meant like in her.
You mean when I did my self-evaluation? I guess I was coming from a place, this is a great question, Lori, I guess, I felt for myself that I wanted that to be the beginning. So this is an evaluation, you're evaluating me, and as you've said, this is the second year that we've been a joint team. So I wanted to begin at a place that was proficient, and I guess have the opportunity to have the kinds of discussions we've had tonight, which is, if that's the, if that's where the beginning step is, you know, do we believe that she's exceeded it? So, but I guess, having said what I just said about the rubric, I also didn't reference back to the rubric again until Ellen and I were talking about it on Monday. I don't want to make you feel uncomfortable, though, so, you know, I'm fine with what, where it stands, it's not a deal breaker.
Well, in light of what the rubric says, in my opinion, I agree that the exemplary rating is where you fall. Although, I also agree with your assessment that it's really difficult to make a firsthand assessment, it's all, it's all secondhand information.
I would, another time, next time, I can provide you, because of course, this is only one of the 33 elements, so I could include this in my survey, for example, that I've given you some survey data from administrators before, I could add some questions around this, that could give you some better data. That's fine.
I thought there were some that did support this, though, and I can't remember specifically now what they were, but I, I noted that there was, you know, there was improvement from one survey to the next in some targeted areas, like, like this, and particularly around modeling.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think it's, it's a problem, I really didn't give you any specific feedback on this, and to Lori's point, I did rate myself as proficient, so I think. I think, although I won't call it out as a specific, I wouldn't think I would want to, because it's something I feel like I don't have to necessarily work on, I could include more evidence on it. So we don't have to belabor it.
I was, I was already there, so I'm not going backwards, but I'll, whatever the rest of you think is fine.
Well, so the other question I have, and it's not, it's not to belittle the fact that having a majority on exemplary is obviously different than proficient, but does it affect any overall rating in that change?
No. That's just, that's just one element of the 33, kind of, four F.
I was one of the proficient, so I would, I would definitely move it to the exemplary side, because of the fact that when I read through the rubric, it speaks to me more than the proficient. And especially in light of all the examples that you provided. So, so I would change mine. Sorry.
Okay.
No.
All the tapes.
Is there anything else?
Nope. Sorry. I was looking through the, the survey results. I was trying to find what Jean was referring to.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Nice work.
Thank you. I, again, think that this is the most impossible way of being reviewed in public, so you do it with class.
That's modeling right there.
Okay. That includes the chair report.
You're done.
You're done. You're down to five C.
Okay, new business, item C, capital-
Can I talk about the building?
How about ESBC?
Oh, God. Sorry. Let's, let's hear, let's hear about the ESBC.
I'm going to do a quick. So just a couple of highlights, but I want to make sure that the committee's updated, because there is, there's a lot going on, because we've entered the detailed design phase. As you know, we've hired a construction manager, we're continuing to get more data and information about the building. The committee met again yesterday to review some additional proposals by the architect around, as we're starting to zero in on what the specific building materials are going to look like. We're getting more cost estimates for those. We're getting more cost estimates for some of the site work around the leveling of the building, based on some, in, some data that we're, that we're receiving. There are, as you would expect in this process, as we get into detailed design, there are decisions we're making around building materials, around building structures, that do nothing to, in any way, take away from the incredible educational experience that it's going to be. But quite frankly, I guess the best way to put it is make the building look a little bit different than the, than some of the pictures that have been shown. So to that end, we have been discussing, how following town meeting, do we just be able to give the public an update on where we are in the building? What are the decisions that are making? What does detailed design mean? Who is the construction manager, and, and what is the, the update to the timeline? So as an elementary school building committee meeting, elementary school building committee, Dr. McLeod and I discussed some ideas for how to engage with the public, so I'll be working with the chair to, to, to set up some opportunities there, too. It's all progressing, I think, really positively. We continue to be really pleased with all of the teams that we've hired, including the construction manager. And biggest thing is we remain on time for opening in 2018.
That's what I was just going to ask. Are we still on time?
We are still on time.
Is there going to be an update at town meeting?
There is not, oh, there is?
Sorry, today they said yes. I didn't think so either, but apparently, when they talked about reports, it just seems like, yeah, it seems like a great opportunity, just at the beginning at reports. You know, John, that's not the information they had given you, but then when we went today under reports, they said that ESBC, I mean, Joe, and probably Joe and Mike.
They, they did say they were giving a report.
About ESBC, you didn't.
They're giving an update on the library, too?
No, but that was asked. That was asked, right? They didn't, they did not put in for a report.
Did you notice that half the building is gone, though?
Isn't that amazing?
Of the library.
You can see how the two buildings are separate. It's fantastic. Yeah.
Okay, are we ready? Five C, capital project article warrant number 16-057, in the amount of $6,057. For our consideration is the request and recommendation of the superintendent for payment of the invoice for a capital project invoice as appropriated in Article 24. This is a recommended motion before you. Are there any comments or questions on the motion? I would seek a motion to approve the payment of warrant number 16-057, in the amount of $6,057 to the vendor, as outlined in the warrant.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Nickerson-